Good morning, everyone. Uh, would like to call to order the, uh, Mayor Commission Work Session of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty, and the local time is ten oh one. Uh, presume Commissioner Beduzzi will be joining us as his picture is up there. All right, uh, let us start with, um, item one, Regulation of Airbnb Vacation Rentals. Uh, was brought forth by Commissioners Fox and Lambert. I don't know if either of you wants to, uh, say anything before we, uh, hear the staff presentation. Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Lambert, any statement?
Sure, sure, Mayor, I'll, I'll, um, say something, and I know that this also ties closely with the next agenda item that we have, um, for this morning, but just, you know, I think that vacation rentals are a growing industry, and I, I think it says a lot about our community that, um, folks want to own vacation rentals in our neighborhoods, because, um, we have such beautiful neighborhoods, and I think we've seen the ability of these vacation rentals, when done well, that they can actually improve the value of homes, improve the neighborhoods. I think, um, two of those that we've seen, um, in the south end are Grandview Gardens and, um, Casa Grandview. Um, but this only works when either the, the homeowners themselves or local ordinances help to keep them to be good neighbors and to make sure that they hold up to good neighbor standards. So, just wanted to see if there was, um, new legislation that had come out. I know some neighboring municipalities have added some recent new policies addressing this. Just seeing what we can do as a city to help make sure that, um, these business owners and homeowners are being held to the high standards that we expect in our neighborhood.
Yeah, very good, uh, before we go any further, I did get a message from Commissioner Beduzzi. He's on the road, so no video, but he will be participating, so welcome Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Fox, did you want to add anything to that before we head into staff presentation?
Thank you, I, I echo, um, what Commissioner Lambert said. I obviously, obviously think it's a great, um, it's great to have these Airbnbs in our community, especially, I think, when you're traveling with kids, you know, that you need a laundry room and a kitchen, and these are, you know, great amenities, um, and, uh, for tourism, for, for, you know, visitors to be able to see all of our neighborhoods. But I am concerned about just, so, I've gotten many specific calls, but then also some more general calls about, you know, issues with, uh, what happens if somebody is having parties all night till four in the morning. There have been incidences where there's fighting on lawns, there's been incidences where neighborhood kids have found, um, people passed out from an overdose in their front yard. So, I guess I'm all, I'm just trying to figure out what should be, I think, the first step for residents when something like this occurs, and then, you know, if there's anything, um, any kind of follow-up, any kind of, anything that we could be putting in place. I know that it's regulated by the state, but just in terms of some of these maybe more frequent incidences happening in the same residence.
Okay, very good, uh, Ms. Johnson, who from staff will be presenting on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the City Attorney, Kimberly Rothenberg, will take the lead.
Okay, very good.
Good ma, good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Kimberly Rothenberg. Jason, if you'll put the presentation up, I'd appreciate it. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about, uh, regulation of vacation rentals, uh, based on the concerns that were raised by both Commissioners, uh, Fox and Lamper. And we're going to start with what is a vacation rental? The statute defines what, uh, types of buildings are, um, encompassed within the definition, and certainly it's a collection of any single-family, two-family, three-family, or four-family homes or dwelling units, and, um, so long as those units are rented more than three times per year on less than thirty days or less, and that's kind of the broad capture that grabs all of your single-family residences within the neighborhoods. So, how are the vacation rentals regulated? Chapter five oh nine of the Florida statutes regulates the licensing and operation of vacation rentals. Uh, most recently, we've had some Palm Beach County Executive Orders specifically regulating, uh, under Executive Order twenty, uh, twenty twenty dash nineteen, the operation of vacation rentals in face of COVID. There's some, a very specific plan that the county had submitted to the Department of Business and Professional Regulations. That plan was approved, and the county has moved forward with execution of this order, uh, twenty dash nineteen. Interestingly, though, the, uh, State of Florida's, uh, Governor's Order twenty dash one twenty-three, um, or actually, it's twenty dash two forty-four, eliminated the necessity in any regulation that had previously required under twenty dash one twenty-three of vacation rentals. So, I'm, um, based on the most recent order, I do not believe that the state is going to be, um, in, in a place to report non-compliance with COVID-related issues as it relates to vacation rentals, but I'll have to clarify that with, um. So, what does the statute specifically preempt? The statute is not all-encompassing preemption, but rather is a preemption of, that you, you cannot prohibit within your jurisdiction operations of vacation rentals, and you cannot regulate the duration or frequency from which they lease the premise, i.e. a number of days, like seven days, ten days, thirty days. We can't do any of that type of regulation. We also can't issue a license business tax receipt or otherwise until the state's licensing has been issued. Uh, there is a lot of regulation as it relates to the operation and health and safety issues for vacation rentals and other types of, um, lodging establishments under section five oh nine. So, what the statute says, there's a, a, um, legal principle called conflict preemption. We can't, um, create a law or ordinance that would conflict with the specific regulations that are set forth in chapter five oh nine. That doesn't mean that we cannot regulate, um, activities within the properties based on our, our code. And in fact, you heard Commissioner Lambert say that she had heard that a municipality recently entered into a, uh, entered or executed an ordinance that regulates vacation rentals. This is kind of a summary of the things, or the type of things that Wellington, um, started to regulate. They require registry of the occupants who come and, and use the facilities. The ordinance also regulates the maximum occupancy based on the number of bedrooms, uh, and also, um, limits, uh, during the daytime. No more than the occupancy per bedroom plus four people can be on the premises. So, if the issue was a party and the, um, unit was a four-bedroom unit, there could be eight people plus four for a total of twelve people. Otherwise, they'd be in violation of this particular ordinance. They also are regulating overnight parking and, and have some specific regulations regarding parking. They're requiring, uh, that the occupants review the sexual offender, sexual predator list, and not rent to any of those folks who appear on that list if they're within two thousand five hundred feet of particular, um, a school, a school bus stop or a park. They also are requiring pets to be leashed. Uh, they require that pool safety, uh, regulations in the Florida statutes are complied with, and they also, uh, won't allow the business to be, um, conducted at those locations until they've obtained their business tax receipt. And then they've put some parameters around additional information that you have to provide before you're granted a business tax receipt. So, that's kind of in a nutshell what Wellington did, but I think that as it relates to what the City of West Palm Beach does, we have to look at, what are those specific issues that are raised by, and that we see are impacting the community? And whether or not the city already has code of ordinances that are in place that would apply to vacation rentals, as well as any other rentals that would address that, uh, particular issue? And if not, what things can we do in order to address some of the issues? And I know that you've heard, um, Commissioner Lambert say that, following this presentation, I believe it was a presentation by, um, Rick and his folks, Eric Schneider, who put together some, um, proposed changes to the permitting of special events that will have an impact on all special events, including those events, how at these vacation rentals that will address some of the parking issues and, and other issues that the city's been facing as it relates to these type of uses at vacation rentals. And with that, that's just a summary, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Uh, one, one question I have, you mentioned, uh, the, uh, regulation by Wellington, uh, and I thought I saw one of your slides that the, uh, regu, any local regulation must be approved on a case-by-case basis. Is that something that is done on a proactive basis? In other words, is a municipal required to submit the proposed regulations to some authority and get their blessing, or can they just impose these, uh, regulations and take their chances?
No, Mayor, what I meant by that was when we, as a, a local government, decide that we want to regulate in an area, um, that is, impacts a lodging facility for which, um, vacation rentals fit, that we would need to look and see what is it that we want to regulate? Is it something that's already regulated under the state law so that we can make sure that we don't conflict with state law and that we stay within our rights to regulate in that area? So, I really said, we need to look at on a case-by-case basis, what are the type of things that we want to address? And is it something that we lawfully can do?
So, that's an internal review on a case-by-case basis, okay. Uh, do we know whether, uh, Wellington's, um, uh, regulation has been challenged in any way by the industry?
It, it was adopted in the last month, so I doubt that it's been, um, challenged yet, but I certainly can contact the city attorney and see if they've had any issues. They, they may.
Okay, all right, we do have some questions, uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, Ms. Rothenberg. I think that those items that you outlined in Wellington's policy are, are definitely good for us to look at. I think, um, going hand-in-hand with those regulations would be, how will we enforce them? And, you know, I echo what Commissioner Fox said. I think we've all received multiple emails and phone calls from, um, folks who live next door or on the same street as some of these vacation rentals that are repeat offenders of even the policies that we might have in place right now, like sound ordinances, um, and such, and they feel at a loss for what to do next. Uh, they've, they've called the police, some of them have said they're on a first-name basis with our code officers, and just wanting to make sure that if we have policies in place, that they have the necessary teeth to also enforce.
I, I can respond, uh, just, just briefly, not that there was a specific question, but generally speaking, as it relates to all of the ordinances that we have in place, there's two ways that they can be, two ways that the city generally enforces. It's either under, through code enforcement and the special magistrate process, or it's, um, if they indicate that they are subject to, um, you know, if, if the, if, if the action in the ordinance is unlawful, or we, we create an ordinance that says it, says that the action is unlawful, it can also be prosecuted as a municipal ordinance violation of, over in the, um, County Criminal Division. But, but as I said, these type of, um, issues that the city's been facing generally are processed through the code enforcement, special magistrate process.
Any follow-up, uh, Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor, and I guess, I didn't see this in the list that Wellington had, um, but maybe there's some sort of, you know, hey, if you get so many calls and, and, um, code enforcement has brought out, or police has called out so many times, that there's some sort of, you know, reprimand or cooling-off period or something. I'm not sure what would be appropriate, but I'm not sure if that's in their ordinance or in any of ours.
I did not see that in the Wellington ordinance, and I think that, that, that it is an area that would take very, very careful crafting, simply because licensing and the operation of the vacation rentals is, uh, an area in which the state and the Department of Business and Professional Regulations takes, um, a lot of latitude there.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Madam President has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for this presentation. I think it's really timely. I just met with a group of neighbors two Sundays ago on Flagler Lane that was having this issue with an Airbnb where the owner was actually out calling police on his own Airbnb because of a party that had gotten out of control. So, we have owners that don't want this to occur too, and I think really important things came out of, out of that conversation in regard to somewhat of what Commissioner Lambert was talking about on enforcement. Um, I think looking at the licensing and business tax receipt, one of the questions was the escalation of if there's no business tax receipt and if there's no licensing done, as well as looking at a three-bedroom house that's being rented for up to twelve people, looking at how we can escalate that. So, compliance on that side, but also my question is compliance on the other side, which becomes really difficult. In that particular case, the police were called out because there was about a hundred and forty people at this party, which caused parking issues, et cetera, but from the street, there was nothing legally enforceable for the police to shut things down. Um, so, you know, the question surrounded, um, noise ordinances, which is mainly what the issue is, whether it's a hundred and forty people or just ten people that are there. You know, what, what can neighbors do about the excessive noise that's coming from these properties? And how can we help create enforceable regulations for our police to be able to help us with vacation rentals that are not being good neighbors? So, is there a way we can set up, you know, at this particular party, they were collecting money at the door, they were collecting money for drinks, they were collecting money for various things. Um, can we have ordinances that say you can't have residential parties that are, you know, income-producing and still allow, um, private residences to have fundraisers? Or allow them to have quiet enjoyment of their property? So, I think that, that's where my question surrounds, both on the, the, um, enforcement side of the regulations around Airbnbs themselves or short-term rentals, of how can we get better compliance for them being licensed, et cetera? But then also, how can we help our police have the tools to regulate when they get, um, out of, out of compliance on that side?
Well, a, as it relates to the, the police and being called for noise, um, issues, the police have the same latitude to enforce the noise ordinance on vacation rentals as they do on any other type of businesses violating the noise ordinance. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the question is. I mean, obviously, they, I believe that they need to be able to hear it and to be able to, um, perceive that the ordinance is being violated in order to write a municipal ordinance violation. If that's the issue that the folks are turning down the music before the police gets there, I think that it's just operationally an issue. Um, the second part of your question, I'm sorry, Commissioner, was what?
Well, first, uh, on clarification, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, for the noise ordinance, Ms. Rothenberg, what is the noise ordinances within residential neighborhoods for a decibel level and a, a shut-off time?
There is no decibel ladder, level in, in the neighborhoods unless you're in the downtown entertainment district, and then we have a, a specific district that is the entertainment district that's regulated by decibel. The rest is the plainly audible standard that's been upheld in courts, um, so that they have to be able to hear it plainly audible, which is, um, a, a level that's above normal speaking conversation that is, annoys the community, in essence.
And then, is there, is there a time that, that?
There is, there is currently, and we're in the process of, of taking it out, there is a provision in the ordinance that indicates that it's a prima facie evidence of a violation of, and I'm going to go from memory, if the noise occurs between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM. Some courts, I understand, have construed that to mean that if it doesn't occur between those times, that it's not a violation, and for that reason, we're going to strike that language, because it really was supposed to make it easier if it did, um, occur during those times. But if it's causing the police any problems at all, we're simply going to, um, recommend to the commission that that language is strict, struck from the ordinance and that we, uh, proceed with just the plainly audible standard at all times and no prima facie showing.
Thank you, um, the second part of my question was around the regulation of business tax receipts and having the correct number of bedrooms, et cetera. How can, I, I mean, I, I understand the city can't be everywhere all at once, and the neighbors are going to be the ones that know best, that there are crowds of twelve people going into a three-bedroom house. How, how can neighbors help get that information back to the city? Help the city have compliance, and then follow up on that, just to make sure that everything has been, uh?
As it relates to the business tax receipt, the business tax receipt itself is just a tax. The operative, um, thing that the city issues in, in addition to the business tax receipt, once they pay the tax, the tax is paid, and there's no regul, regulatory authority under the tax. But we do have regulatory authority under the certificate of use portion of the city's code, so that would be an area that we could look at to see what, how we can, um, how we can modify to give a little bit more teeth, um, without, though, um, overstepping our bounds as it relates to the state's ability to regulate the, um, continued use of lodging facilities, including vacation rentals. So, it's, it's a little bit of a delicate balance, but, um, something that can be looked at.
Thank you.
Ms. Rothenberg, have we seen any local, um, regulation of vacation rentals from out, around the state that have, uh, passed muster? Has this been tested? Have, have any been successfully tested?
There's a few cases out there that look at, um, specific regulations. Uh, I have a, an older memo from two thousand and eight that can be updated. Um, there's not been a, a full, uh, ordinance like Wellington's, let's say, um, that's specifically directed at vacation rentals, that you could just say, hey, this passes muster. But certainly, I think that you can read all of the cases together and construe what type of things you can regulate and what you can't. And I'll give you an example. Um, in, in the statute itself, in five oh nine, there's a provision that, that, uh, the state says that they won't allow, or, or they're, they embrace the concept or idea that you can't have nuisance activity at the properties, like drug sales, uh, prostitution, gang-related activity, and other nuisance activities. So, I think that if we, um, created regulations that prohibit nuisance activity, it, it shouldn't conflict with the state's statute. Um, would it be subject to some challenge? Potentially, if a business operator were unhappy with how it applied to his building? Certainly, I mean, you're always subject to that type of challenge.
Okay, uh, we do have a question from Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll turn my video on here for a second. Thanks. Um, so, the question I have, I, I understand that the state statute preempts, um, us from taking action or, or regulating Airbnb rental properties. Um, but I assume that homeowners' association and property owners' associations are permitted, um, to regulate these types of, of rentals? And if my assumption is correct, um, would these, some of these areas that are affected by, um, you know, these short-term rentals be able to organize homeowners' associations um, that could preclude this kind of, uh, rental activity?
Well, based on my limited knowledge of homeowners' association law, I do know that there, I do know there are some areas that they are allowed to regulate that otherwise wouldn't be permissible. I'd really have to look at the condominium statute and see if this is one of those areas, um, that they're allowed to regulate what type of activity happens within the, uh, condominium associations, and whether or not regular neighborhoods would constitute a neighborhood association, um, under seven eighteen. And I, I just don't know the answer to that, as, as I sit here.
Thank you, I, I just was, sorry, could I follow up, Mayor?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was just looking for some alternative if we're preempted from acting. Is there any, you know, way that these, uh, neighborhoods could take, you know, a little bit more control by somehow organizing either in a civic association, a, a homeowner association, something like that? Because I, as, my understanding is that the HOAs and POAs in some of our, like, gated communities and, and elsewhere are regulating them and don't allow these short-term rentals.
I, I wouldn't doubt that, but like I said, I'd have to look at the condominium statute, number one, and make sure that, that that is something they can do. And then, number two, um, I don't know that the condominium statute would automatically apply to a neighborhood that gets together and creates an association, but, but I can certainly look at it.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, and also, I guess, Mayor, if you, if you don't mind, I did want to say, Commissioner Beduzzi, I'm not saying that you can't regulate at all, because there are regulations that are, uh, appropriate, I believe, uh, for vacation rentals, noise, parking, um, the conditions of the building, regular code enforcement-type issues. I think they should be able to be managed through regulations by the municipality under our home law authority without, um, conflicting with the state statute.
And I think that the major difference there is that when you become, when you buy property that's governed by one of these associations, you expressly, uh, agree, uh, to abide by those rules and regulations. Um, so, you, you, you've consented to regulation, in effect. Uh, i- if there is a formal association, um, whether, you know, just five or six people in the neighborhood can, can do that, um, I, I, I don't know, it's probably a tougher question. Uh, we do have another question from Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the other, uh, topics that I've heard relevant to this conversation is that neighbors are continually concerned that, as we do have very desirable neighborhoods to have, you know, short-term rentals, et cetera, that we start to get a concentration of vacation rentals on a street, which is much different than having an ownership, um, neighborhood. So, as we go down the road, I think the question would be, would we look into, um, some sort of regulation of density of vacation rentals? So that only so many are allowed within so much of a geographic region? I don't know if that, if we're preempted out of doing that. Um, but I think, you know, many neighbors are, are vacation rental owners themselves, and so it's not a, an anti-vacation rental sentiment. It's just about making sure that we still keep the fabric of our neighborhoods intact, where you can go next door and, and know who's there, but also allow visitors to come in. So, you know, I think that, that's one of the concerns that I hear coming from the neighborhoods. Would we be able to, down the line, look into, um, some sort of density regulation?
I, I believe that I've seen a case on density. I don't recall what the outcome of it was. Uh, I'll pull it, and I'll, uh, that'll be an easy question to answer. That one, I believe, has already been answered by the courts.
All right, so you'll follow up and get back to, uh, to us with that answer?
I will.
Uh, the other takeaway, uh, Madam City Attorney, is if you could do a, an updated survey from around the state and to see if there are any, um, uh, local regulation ordinances that have, uh, regulated, uh, in this area that has, that, that seem to have passed muster, um, that would be good information for us to know.
I will update the research and make sure I get it out to you, Mayor, and the commission.
And yeah, if you could report back to us. Uh, 'cause, 'cause I guess what I'm hearing is a desire, Commissioners, to regulate to the extent we can, um, recognizing that our hands are somewhat tied by state law, but if there are, um, examples out there of, of local regulation, we, we should at least be aware of those and take those into account. All right, anything else on this item? Uh, yes, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I think that this is great, we're looking into this. It's, uh, from my perspective, it's a matter of quality of life for our neighbors. My, um, comment, and I, I think that this really ties to our next conversation as well, but in the south end of the city, the neighborhoods where this is happening and where this is becoming an issue, we already have issues with parking on the neighborhood streets, which I understand is within law, but when there's these parties or multiple, um, folks who are staying at the house more than what the house can hold, it's, it's creating even more issues on top of an issue we already have in the city. So, just, um, wanted to make a note of that, that we look into that as well with any ordinances that we may come up with. Thank you.
And, and Madam City Attorney, my correct and understanding that if there are existing, uh, ordinances, uh, resolutions on the books, we can enforce those, such as parking. I mean, if we, we, if we have a limitation on parking in certain neighborhoods, or if there are code issues that, uh, a, a non-littering issue, we can enforce those, correct?
Yes, you can, yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
There should be some housing standards on occupancy, too, that are enforceable.
Uh, you know, you know what would be nice is to have You know what would be nice is to have. Made available to us and the commissioners. Ordnances, resolutions that would specifically apply to. Vacation rentals. Such as whether it's parking. Housing restriction that are already on the books. So it doesn't look like it is specific to vacation rentals. That, that we can, you know, if we do have. A, 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 a list of those, we can certainly start sharing those with the neighborhoods and say, while you, we can't. Restrict vacation rentals per se, we can certainly attempt to clamp down on violation of the following. That would be helpful. I, I think that would be helpful.
I will get that.
Okay. I don't see anything else here. We'll move to item two. The draft ordinances for special events. Commissioner Lambert, do you want to say anything before we get into a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this just ties in nicely with the previous conversation. And, you know, just as it relates to folks having events. That might be at a venue within our neighborhoods, adding to increased parking issues and quality of life issues. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, I was just gonna, if, if I might, make a suggestion with. The, I, I love your idea of getting us the ordinances that might be in place. And I don't know if. If somebody on your staff or if this was what you intended already, could maybe make a FAQ. About our ordinances that relate to vacation rentals so that. It's something that's very easily distributed and, and handed out to the residents who may have concern.
Uh, that, that's, that's a great idea. Let, let me see what they come up with and then we'll try to massage it and put it into a format. For distribution, but, but I wanted to see what, what it looked like and certainly have you all look at it as well. But I think the. An FAQ is, is a very good idea, so we'll see. We'll do it a step at a time. We'll, we'll get, we'll get the list of ordinance, et cetera. Massage that and then maybe put it into a more. A fancier form. Alright, so, so Ms. Rothenberg, you kind of get a sense where we're going with that?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Alright, so Mr. Green, you're, you're, you're addressing this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
I've shared my screen. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, again, Rick Green Development Services Director, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. What I'd like to do is go through a, a quick background to explain to the commissioners how we got to the point we are at now. And really a couple instances that led us to discussions of a modification of the special events ordinance. Beginning with the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden at two fifty-three. Barcelona Road, you see an aerial here of the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden. A total of three buildings, two were built in nineteen twenty-five, one in nineteen forty-five, approximately six thousand square feet. The zoning is SF fit fourteen in the historic El Cid neighborhood. Just to the north of the Ann Norton, you have the Palm Beach Day Academy School. And then further west on Barcelona and Flamingo, you have the Carefree Six Site. We're working on an application that's been submitted to the city on that site. And as the commissioners had, had mentioned in the earlier discussion, you know, the problem has been when an event takes place, there's a great deal of parking on Barcelona. And that has created a lot of issues, a lot of problems. The Ann Norton Sculpture Garden has a series of events. These are just the sampling of some of the ones that took place. Late last year, and these are ongoing throughout the year. Typically slows down in the summertime, but generally there are events that are taking place all the time. So just some pictures so you get recognition of what it looks like. In the top left corner, you see the Barcelona looking west from Flagler Drive, the Ann Norton facility is located on the right side. Just below that, it's the other direction looking east toward the intra-coastal. You see the Ann Norton at the end of the street on the left-hand side. And in a larger picture on the right simply shows the Barcelona, Barcelona Road. In configuration when you have cars parked on both sides. So you see how tight it can be on that particular street. And that's evident with a lot of the streets on the south end. The second case that kind of got our attention was seven seventeen Forest Hill Boulevard. This is a property that's located north of the municipal golf course, just east of the Forest Hill High School. And like Ann Norton, there are a series of structures built in nineteen twenty-five, just under thirty-seven hundred square feet. And this is in our single-family seven zoning district, which again is, is the least dense zoning district we have in the city. In a layout of, of the configuration of the buildings, they are again occupying more than, than a couple lots. If you go on the website, there's a gentleman who has a website called Events at the Rich Hippies House. They were advertising for four separate units, events over seventeen people required to stay at the facility. And they were advertising weddings that could accommodate up to a hundred and twenty-five persons. So obviously, as the events were taking place and the weddings were ongoing, it was causing a lot of disruptions in the neighborhood. The owner was cited for multiple violations earlier this year in January for doing work without permits, didn't have proper business license, illegal events. They were cited again on February seventh of this year for illegally converting. Two of the units which was permitted by zoning code to four units. Went to a special magistrate hearing on February twenty-fourth and a fine of a thousand dollars was imposed at that meeting. And they were subsequently taken back to the federal, to the special magistrate on July fifteenth and a ten thousand dollar fine. Was imposed because again wedding events took place after that initial magistrate hearing on February twenty-fourth. So these are the two events that kind of caught our attention. So having said that, we said it's time to maybe tighten up our special events ordinance. A little bit stronger than what we've had. So that language is in the city code under chapter seventy-eight. You see the sections of the. Special events ordinance now. As part of the draft, we are discussing tonight, we're including a section seventy-eight, one sixty. Which addresses violations, enforcement, revocation of permits. And then the section one sixty-one, which is the appeal procedure. So again, you'll see this in more detail at a later date. What we're giving you is just kind of an overview of what we've been discussing. It will require city commission approval because it is an amendment to the city code. And we have been working very closely with community events, police, fire, law, building, parks and recreation and the public. So Mary Pennack. Angela Van, Eric Schneider, Stacy in Law, as well as Kimberly, a lot of folks have been commenting and providing us input. And that discussion will continue subsequent to this workshop. The big question that we would like to answer, ask today of the commission. Is do we want to limit the number of special events on private property? And that'll be the prevailing theme as, as I go through the rest of this presentation. So some of the things that we will be doing as we are revising our definitions section. So we'll have a better and stronger definition of what a special event is. And again, I'm not going to ask the commission and the mayor to go through this item by item. But just to kind of give you a flavor of the things that we've been working on. So. We're expanding the definition to talk about required street closing, closings, utilizing city property above normal usage. Trying to define special events as fifty or more people. Talking about the. Unlike the customary or, or usual activity associated with a building or a business use. If it requires the use of city resources and then any other criteria the mayor may deem important that would fall into this category. We also list items that does not constitute what a special event may be. And then what we really did was focus on three definitions or three areas of special events, and I've highlighted them in green on the attached slide. So one is if it's a public, if it, it's an event that takes place on public property. This is generally regulated by community events. These would be your Sunfest, your boat shows, your other events, not necessarily to that scale. But they would fall into this category. A, a special event that's held on private property is addressed differently. We have to look at residential zoning, the commercial use of the event, and if it's sponsored by the DDA, the CRA. But there are a whole series of requirements that fall into this category. And then thirdly is the neighborhood block party, and those are events that typically take place on a street. So for either permit in section seventy-eight, one fifty-two, we obviously have and will continue to require. That a special event first be obtained from the city. If you're going to be doing advertising, then an advertising permit must also be required. You see here under section seventy-eight, one fifty-three, the application that's required for a special event, and you see the three. Areas identified in the colors. So if it's a public, an, an event on public property. Community events, Mary Pennack's group will be reviewing that. If it's on private property, it's reflected in the red, that will be my department, Development Services. And then if it's a neighborhood block party special event, that'll be regulated by the engineering department and Kevin Bulbrick's group. And again, we'll have separate requirements for each of the three categories, if you will. And we'll have the deadlines for when the applications must be processed, so we have sufficient time to review them. So today we do require, as, as noted in section seventy-eight, one fifty-four. We do require criteria for our review. Obviously, the name of the applicant, description of the event, the event date and hours, if there's additional time required to set up or break down after the event. Whether there will be music, estimate of attendance, whether there'll be alcohol intense involved. So this is an sample. Of one that Ann Norton submitted to us earlier. We are expanding that review to ask for other things. So again, music and expected noise, we are going to get into parking, particularly with what we're seeing on the south end of the city. Expanding that to also include valet parking and that, how that's going to be handled, any. Impact it may have on, require licenses, building permits, we're going to check zoning. So we're expanding the criteria that we will be using. We extend that even further. Again, one of the things we're going to focus on is proximity to resident, residential districts. So with uses like seven seventeen Forest Hill, where some of the uses there were not complying with zoning, we're going to take a look at that. We're going to ask for hours of operation, whether there's amplified music. And you see the list of things that we're going to be looking at, again, a lot more specific than what we have today. So the, the big issue is again, if you're having an event on private property, do we want to limit? The number of events. We are suggesting somewhere in the range of two to six times with, within a three hundred and sixty-five day period. So at the end of the presentation, we would like to have that discussion and see what the commission feels comfortable with. But staff is suggesting it should be somewhere in that range between two and six times a year. If the special event is going to take place on private property and parking is going to be involved, including valet parking. We're going to make sure that the applicant has secured approval for the use of the right-of-way, whether it's a city street, whether it's a county street or FDOT. If the parking is provided, we want a notarized authorization from the property owner that's displayed on Papa. That they have the ability and the right to use that off-street parking. So as an example, I know that Ann Norton has been using the Palm Beach Day Academy to the north. Again, we'd like to better formalize that process. The event itself, we're saying can't take place more than three consecutive days, including setup and breakdown. And again, we're going to be asking for a notarized authorization from the property owner if parking is going to be provided off-site. And then, and then again, we're also going to have the rationale and. How a special event may be denied. So we're going to get into specifics on that as well. So once again, you see the three types of special events, public property handled by community events. Private property by development services, the block party by engineering. We will have application fee due dates. And this has been one of our biggest challenges, particularly on the private property events. In the past, we have found out about some of these events through Facebook. Applications are not always submitted to the city, so we are scrambling with one or two days' notice to try to review the application. And get it issued in time, so we, we've tried to be responsive. But what we'd like to do with these amendments is make sure that we and the neighborhood have sufficient notice when an event might take place. Talk about security deposits for public properties and then we'll have. Criteria and therefore refunds, particularly for events that happen on public property. And then again, for those events that do not follow the. Requirements for submission to us, we will talk about having a, a expedited fee. If somebody can't comply with this or don't submit the permit to us and we find out about it, because it does cause my department a lot of. A lot of scrambling to try to get the, the event permit issued in time. So for the conditions of the permit, again, if it's an event that happens on private property, as, as Attorney Lamb. Rothenberg mentioned earlier, we do have a requirement between eleven PM and seven AM, no amplified sound, and it's the, the sound. Measure that, that Kimberly referenced earlier. Must follow all city ordinances, insurance obviously has to be provided. If you're selling alcohol, there is a requirement, you have the permit from the Florida Division of Alcoholic Beverages. If you have tents, electrical cooking facilities, that requires a permit. If you're using the road right-of-way again, or the valet service, you have to have the approval from either the city, the county or FDOT, depending on the roadway. Permits must be on site. And then for the neighborhood block party, we're going to prohibit alcohol sales, DJs. Tents, bounce houses from taking place on the actual road itself. We have a new section that we want to include on violations and unpermitted events. That is one of the issues again we, we are facing in light of the earlier discussion on the vacation rentals. A lot of times we have situations where people just don't pull permits, they have events. So we'd like to add a little bit more teeth to the ordinance and that's what we'd like to do here. So again, we're going to enforce our city codes. If there are violations, they'll be presented to the special magistrate, they'll be given time to correct the violation. Each one will be individual, like, like we did at seven seventeen, each wedding is considered a, a violation and. It's not a blanket covering all violations there. And again, we'll have language on how a permit may be revoked. And then they'll have an appeal process that will talk about the appeal process for an applicant whose special event is shut down. Or denied. We have been working very closely with El Cid, Kevin Lawler and his team. They provided comments to us on August thirteenth, so prior to us coming back to the city commission. With a final draft ordinance, we will review these in more detail. Some of the questions that were raised by El Cid are contained in this slide. Some of the things are things we think we can accommodate, some may be a little bit more challenging. But what is of interest is at the very last one highlighted in green, that El Cid supports. The limitation of six events. Again, I had discussed the two to six number. They support the six events provided that. No more than two take place within, within a single month. So with that, really the two questions we'd like to come out of the workshop with some discussion on is does the city want to impose a limitation? And if so, what should that number be when we come back to you for a final ordinance? And then secondly, as we discussed in the earlier discussion on the vacation rentals. This is the language that Kimberly referenced that we use today outside of the downtown, again, between eleven PM and seven AM. That the noise says it can't be in such a manner to be plainly audible from a distance of a hundred feet from the building. Again, do we want to use this language? Do we want to go to decibel? I think in the past. The sentiment seemed to be from the commission that they wanted to continue to use this language. But with that, that concludes my presentation. We've got folks from a lot of the other departments that worked on this online as well. If you have any specific questions from them, but. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Rick, for that presentation. Was police part of that discussion?
Yes, they were.
Alright, because that, that's, that's something that is of concern. If somebody just simply does not. Comply with the permit application process and holds their event. Should police, yeah, and, you know, then, then would follow up on police, I guess, just to simply go out there. And shut it down, which is a use of police resources and could escalate into something else. But to really accomplish the spirit of the proposed language. Which is if you don't have a permit, you can't operate the special event. It would seem like we'd have to have some kind of. Measure in place that would allow authorized police to shut, shut a, an event down without. That was operating without a permit and that presents its own set of, of issues. Commissioner Fox, I, I apologize. I, I see you wanted to speak, and I don't know if it was on the, the previous item or on this item. It says vacation rental, so I apologize if I missed you on the previous item, but you're free to, to, to ask it. Make any comment or ask any questions you have now.
Okay, well, I do have a question about this item. If we're opening up the questions for this item.
Yes, yes, yes.
I see that Annorin Sculpture Gardens on this list. I haven't had a chance to speak to them, you know, I didn't know that this is what part of our discussion. I guess I would like to understand a little bit more from them about the number of events. I would think that they're impacted more than, than the average private property home in this neighborhood. Because they do have a lot of events, so.
Commissioner, let me add that if it's an event that's related to the actual Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, that doesn't fall into the number of events, I should have clarified that earlier. But if they rent their venue for, let's say, a wedding that's not tied specifically to the use of Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, then that would be considered an event. But if it's something that's tied to the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, we don't treat that as a special event that would fall into that list of, you know, either two to six categories.
Okay, Madam President had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have one question and one comment. My question is regarding some of what you were discussing earlier about the police department. I had written that down too, to see if there was a way that we're notifying the police department in advance saying, these special events permits have been issued this weekend or this week or whatever. So that way, the police department, if they get a call for something else, already know going into it, there's been no permit issued, so that way they don't have to go back and check. But just something proactive that we're releasing to P D., do we do that?
We've been doing that recently, particularly with the, both the Ann Norton and the seven seventeen. Part of the challenge we have is that sometimes these venues actually hire our police officers to work security for the event. And it puts the police officer in a little difficult situation at times. But when we do get a special event, one of the things that we ask for is the maximum occupancy. In the case of Ann Norton, we've had situations where they've given us a number and it turned out to be a lot more people than even they anticipated. But when we see it's going to be a big event, we definitely let police know. We talk to them about what they've described in their permit, whether it's going to be parking, valet service. We've been trying to discourage valet service on Barcelona, trying to accommodate all the parking either on the site itself or in some other venue where it's not going to impact the public street. But we do contact the police and make them aware of whatever issues we anticipate may take place with that event.
Thank you, and a comment if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
In regard to the feedback on limiting number of events, I think the intent here is to really seal up what those regulations are, what defines an event and what the order of operations need to be to have an event such as this. And so I guess to that end, I would think as long as we have organizations, private neighborhoods, whomever, in compliance with that ordinance, you know, I don't see the need to limit this specific number as long as the events are going on within regulation. If you are not following the regulations of the event, you know, I would think that that would start to do away with your privilege of having special events. But as long as everyone is in compliance and those events are going according to plan, not impacting the parking of the neighborhood, not having those negative effects within neighborhoods, you know, as long as it creates a symbiotic relationship between that entity and the neighborhood, if they want to have six events or ten events, you know, as long as it's not impactful to the neighborhoods, I wouldn't see an issue with that.
Let me address something that I just heard. And I don't know if we have representatives of the police here, but I would hope that police are not authorizing overtime officers to man an event that has not been licensed. So in other words, if there is a special event that requires a permit and a permit has not been issued, I would hope that they are, that unpermitted event is not allowed to use our police department. That just seems contrary to, that boggles my mind. So is that what you suggested? Rick, is that sometimes these unpermitted events are using our police officers?
I don't know for certain, Mayor. I just know that a lot of these events will hire police officers and many times they are in fact permitted. But what happens is they just escalate into more than what anybody anticipated. The parking becomes an issue. If an application says they are going to valet at this location, then what happens sometimes, we find out is that what they told us in the permit is not what's happening. And they are in fact, let's say, valet parking on a public street. So that's what I think we would like to see resolved, that they submit a permit to us, it's compliant with all our codes. And more importantly, they follow what they tell us in terms of how they're going to handle the parking, if there's valet parking involved, the noise, the time, the hours, et cetera.
Okay. Well, two things. One is I'd like confirmation from Chief Adderley or his department that they aren't allowing uniform officers to man events that are not permitted. First of all, I want to make sure that, you know, officers can't get overtime for being at an event that is without a permit. So hopefully, somebody can confirm that. And then from an enforcement standpoint, to be, if they are working at a permitted event, I guess, asking them to be eyes and ears to see if the terms of that event are being met. It really puts our police department in an unfortunate position. But I don't see another way around it. I don't see another way of enforcing, and I guess it's like anything else, and you know, that we ask them to enforce our laws. And if this is a law, then unfortunately, they are the body that is going to be called upon to enforce it. But I don't want men and women in blue working at an event that is not permitted. Okay, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr., yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Rick, for the presentation. I tend to agree with Commissioner Shuf about the number of events, but I think that's almost in a perfect world that, you know, they would be complying with all of the regulations and the policies. And I'm just a little bit leery, you know, about the enforcement of those policies and, you know, worried about the, just the feel of too many events in a neighborhood and the impact that it has on that neighborhood. So I, you know, I would like maybe to see this in a little bit more detail, Rick, and as you're putting it together, have some time to review it, talk to the residents about it as well. I think that I'm really appreciative of the staff and the enforcement of seven seventeen Forest Hill. That was something that the neighbors, the neighborhood association got out and got behind. But what happened in that situation is the residents really were constantly having to, I don't want to use the term police it, but I don't know what other term to use, they're constantly monitoring it. And so much so that I think that maybe even a few may have got a little overzealous. And now we've got some complaints from the property owner on, you know, residents, you know, playing police and taking it a little bit too far. So I just want to be careful of that balance. Also, how does this, it seems like we're talking about venues that, you know, may already have events, that may, you know, the process for applying for event permits. What about those vacation rentals that we were talking about in the last item, where it's a homeowner who rented it out and somebody has a party there? They obviously, or maybe didn't know they had to get a permit because they were having this party without even telling the owner. What happens in that situation?
Yeah, that's, that's a little separate. I don't think you would tie that into special event, that's a separate classification. And that was, that's really just a violation of our city code. So that's not something that if somebody wanted to have a venue like that, they would come in and get a special event permit. That was something that in the specific case that Commissioner Shuf mentioned that happened a few weeks ago, that was a situation where the party was ongoing till three thirty in the morning and then the gentleman who owned the home ended up calling the police because it escalated into something that he didn't anticipate. But I wouldn't tie that with the special events ordinance, I would say they're two different things.
Madam President, you had another question?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think I want to clarify because I think as we look at this, I view events and an entity like an Ann Norton Sculpture Garden and a seven seventeen Forest Hill is kind of two separate things, the same but different. On seven seventeen, you have a residential property that's being used for commercial purposes. And towards the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, it's registered commercial purposes, but it falls within a residential neighborhood. So they have some similar flavors to them, but I think that I want to make that distinct difference because what was happening at seven seventeen Forest Hill did get completely out of control. And I think those are the things that we are here to regulate against. So is there a way that, and again, I'm not trying to make this too complicated, but is there a way that we could kind of have the best of both worlds that say, you know, your number of events will be limited unless you are found out of compliance so many times, you know? So that way, there is the ability for entities to still have weddings, private events, et cetera, things that are revenue generating and help entities go on about their business, but still protect the neighborhoods from having a nuisance. So, you know, I don't know if there would be language that would create that ability or, you know, you can have six events per year, but there's an appeal process if you want to have more. And that way, if you're operating within good regulation of the six events that you put on, then there shouldn't be an issue of getting approval for more events. Again, not trying to make it too complicated, but just allowing people, entities that are operating within the parameters that we've set to continue to, you know, make the revenue that they need to keep the organizations going, et cetera.
We can do that. I certainly like the latter recommendation where we start out with a number, with an appeal to let them do more. But I'd rather be more cautious and impose a limitation at first so they can generate a track record, for lack of a better term. And if they're compliant, then we can allow them to move forward as opposed to not having a limitation because then we're going to have two weddings every weekend at certain locations, which is going to be really disruptive.
Yeah, I agree with that approach as well. Let's put a number in and give them the opportunity to appeal for something in excess of that number. But given where many of these are located, particularly in single-family neighborhoods, I like to see a limit. The primary purpose of those neighborhoods is single-family living and not to support a business. Commissioner Fox, you had a comment in this area.
Thank you. It was similar to what Commissioner Shuf was mentioning, but I'm looking at the website for Ann Norton right now and it's talking about the rental facilities that it's a membership benefit at a certain level. And so, you know, I think I really would like to talk to them about how this might impact their membership or things that have already been promised to people that might have, you know, donated at a certain level. I, of course, understand that the neighborhood, it's really a challenge with the parking for them. But, you know, since I'm sort of new to this, I haven't had an opportunity to actually talk to the Ann Norton about how this works with them and how this is either a revenue generator or, you know, the top members that might already have, you know, plans in place. So I just wanted to mention that. You know, and if, you know, it's okay if I get in touch with them and I can give you a little bit more detail about anything that they might already be planning.
Yeah, I mean, nothing is extra in stone after this conversation. Whatever comes to, before adopting any of this, has got to come back before the commission. So you'll have plenty of opportunity to do your research. But I think in terms of guidance, Rick, you know, and I'll just throw this out there, it sounds like what was proposed by Madam President might work when we have a specific number and then a process in place for an appeal, if you want to exceed that number.
That works, we can draft language to that effect, that's fine.
Yeah. And then in terms of your second request, a noise violation, I would be one to say that let's leave the language as plainly audible. That way, we don't have to worry about people trying to run around with noise meters.
Okay.
That's just one person speaking. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, and I just, I really liked your comment that we work with police as closely as we can on this. I certainly don't want to make it, you know, where the neighbors feel like they have to be constantly calling the police. So just want to make sure that they're involved in the process and they know where to find out how many events that that one location has already had or if they're permitted for this event.
And I'd also, Rick, like to make sure the police are comfortable with the idea of having to shut down an event that is operating without a permit. Because the city code, this language here certainly suggests that that would be an option. Otherwise, we wouldn't have people apply for permits. They would simply take their lumps later, have the event, make their money and take their chances later. So we need to have a hammer in here, and the hammer is probably going to be our police department. But let's make sure they're part of that conversation.
Yes.
All right, anything else on this item? Any other questions, comments, commissioners?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, before we actually leave item two, I know it in part addressed parking. But we do have Kevin Volbridge. I think there was a specific discussion regarding parking options on Monsu that somewhat related to this item, so I didn't want us to just move on to three before he had an opportunity to talk about that.
Well, because it's after eleven, I want to make sure we're not running out of time. Because we got two other items. I don't know how long paving and the consolidated action plan, I think usually takes a lot of time. So let's table parking on Monsu for now. And let's get to items three and four, and if we have time, we can come back. But I want to make sure we have sufficient time, I don't have to rush to the consolidated action plan, consolidated action plan. All right, so table parking on Monsu for now. Item three, paving criteria strategy update. Kevin, is this yours?
Hey, yeah, let me get my screen shared here. A minute, please. Why is this not going on here?
Kevin hit slideshow up top.
Yeah, let me get to that.
Kevin, it's on, just go to slideshow and then go from beginning.
Okay. Okay, so you can see it, okay, good. All right, so basically, for the paving program, what we have going on over the past few years and for this next coming year, first I'll highlight the things that we've done this year. We paved approximately seven miles of roads and alleys in twenty twenty, spent about six point eight million dollars on paving and road improvements, including sidewalks, curbs and gutters and those types of things in relation to roadway improvements. Some of that was paving. We did some projects, we used some of the paving gas tax money for Spruce Avenue improvements, which we completed last year. We paved the twenty-seventh street. We're going to be using paving money for the Windsor thirty-first to thirty-fifth utilities project. And we used some of that for that, I should say, and we also paved fifty-eighth street. These are all in District One. In District Three, in Commissioner Fox's district, we're currently finishing up Second Street between Tammer and Rosemary. We did pave two sections of Roosevelt Estates. And Roosevelt Estates. Uh, we did this Tammer and Avenue Safety Improvements Project where we paved basically between Banyon and Fern Street. With a number of other uh amenities for safety uh crossing and such and whatnot. Also, Henrietta from eleventh to fifteenth street, we uh, we also paved that. And then in District Five, uh, we did the section between Southern and Belvedere on Parker Avenue, which included bike lanes and school crossings. Uh, we paved Valet Way. We worked on, did paving in Grandview Heights is the uh utility project that we did the first phase of that. And then also on Gregory Road, we did some paving and traffic calming. So that uh speaks for the uh, the money that we spent this past year. Uh, we basically look at the pavement condition index. Uh, what is this? Uh, you know, we look at. The city has over two hundred sixty miles of roads and alleys. Um, back in twenty thirteen, when we did the first assessment, um, we had a pavement condition index average of sixty four point one. We want to see if we can achieve at least a seventy one. We did a a reevaluation of our pavement condition index in twenty eighteen. And we found that we had an average condition of seventy seven uh versus uh the seventy one target that we're looking for. And that obviously reflected the paving work that was done uh between two thousand thirteen and two thousand eighteen. We anticipate to do this same pavement condition index uh survey, which is a digital scan of all the roadways throughout the city. We'll do that again and uh, we did it every five years, so it'll happen again in twenty twenty three. We're hoping to be able to get to a ninety at that point. Or, and so um, our engineering strategy for um. You know, what we look at, uh, we look at if we're going to do any kind of right away permit requirements that may require some paving to be done. Like on both sides of trenches and, you know, areas out in front of developments, et cetera. Same thing with the PPRC requirements. And then we also want to coordinate with whatever utilities work may may need to be done in certain neighborhoods. Uh, so that we um, uh, will be able to do the necessary underground work and then, of course, repave the streets on top of those when we're finished. To looking for that synergy uh to make sure that we uh, you know, do this most efficiently and effectively. And sometimes that doesn't always um, uh, is not always predicated on the pavement condition index, but it it's predicated on the utility work. And the condition assessment of those where that needs to be done. And so sometimes we need to use some of our our pavement money to reconstruct those roads. Uh, where we're doing some some critical utility work. And then the road resurfacing program, which is based uh primarily on the pavement condition index. And so that's what we look at. When we're trying to decide which projects we need to use. Uh, the uh sales tax money or the gas tax money uh to do resurfacing. So um, the uh, this year for uh gas tax roadway improvements for for fiscal twenty one. We're going to have about one point one million. Last year, we had about two point three million dollars to begin with. Um. We have spent uh uh some money out of that this year. We ran a carry forward about um. Two hundred seventy five thousand dollars of that. We're only allotting eight hundred twenty five thousand dollars of new money towards that program this year because of the. Uh, decrease in the revenues from the gas tax this year. And so we'll have a ma- one point one million dollars. We have about four point six million dollars left in the citywide roadway improvements from the sales tax program. Which I discussed uh uh a few weeks ago when I made the presentation on that with you. And um, again, we look at the pavement condition index, utilities, infrastructure needs. Uh, what is the uh road uh use? You know, what's the the access and the traffic counts and those kinds of things where we need to focus on. And then um, currently, our PCI focus area, our pavement condition index focus area is anything less than fifty five. And so we're working our way uh up the list from the worst to the best. And um, and then we also want to take into account our Vision Zero policy where we have safety benefits. We need new crosswalks, ADA compliance upgrades and things like that, that we also factor in. To the uh decisions on which projects we're going to go forward with and fund. Okay, uh, the road resurfacing program, the pavement condition index is is on the city website at W P B dot org. If you go to the government tab and uh, we'll go down here to road resurfacing program, it'll gives you an overview of it. And I highlighted here, you can check out this interactive map. If you click on that. It will take you to uh, a map of the city, which I've enlarged here just to show you. And if you put your cursor over on something here, you can see that fifty eighth street, which is one of the projects that we're paving right now. Shows a uh PCI range of forty one to fifty five, which is poor and which is the reason that we did the paving on that. And that was strictly for a resurfacing program. Also, you can look at other areas of the city and see where they are. Basically, if it's um, uh. Green, it's good. As as it's a yellowish-green, it's a satisfactory. Yellow is fair, purple is poor, red is very bad, and of course, uh, the the other colors are are even worse. But we're not in the, anything below twenty five right now, thank goodness. And I just wanted to highlight here on Village Boulevard, uh, showing us a range of seventy one to eighty five. Which is uh categorized as satisfactory. There are a few spot sections of that. That uh are probably in a lower category and we'll look at if we're going to be able to do any of those this coming year. Uh, based on the other priorities that we're looking at. And uh, so anybody can go look at this stuff on the website and see what the pavement condition indexes are. Uh, for any of the streets in the city. Uh, the current priorities that we have based on this PCI uh cat uh numbers that we were looking at. We're looking at uh fifty ninth street from Pinewood to Flagler, which has got a PCI of fifty four. Uh, and forty third street, Pinewood Avenue to Flagler, which is a PCI of forty nine. Those are both in Kelly Shof's District One. Uh, Carver Avenue between Seventh and Thirteenth Street has a PCI of forty seven. Uh, Pine Terrace between Dixie and Washington Road uh also has a a PCI of forty five that we're looking at potentially doing. Summer Street with a PCI of fifty two between Norton and Dixie. These are down in District Five and Christine Lambert's District and then Plymouth Road also a PCI forty four. Between Webster and Dixie that uh, looks like for those, just for those conditions alone. That's only about one point six eight miles of uh of roads that need to be paved uh for the uh, the poor conditions that they're in. There are also other criteria, like I mentioned with the utilities and the um, the uh Vision Zero safety requirements. But basically, we have um, two point five six million dollars worth of projects. Here, uh, again, our paving budget for next year, one point one million dollars in gas tax. We have about four point six million dollars in sales tax uh roadway improvements. Of which we've committed about three point two million dollars worth of uh uh cost for various projects. Such as the um Roosevelt Estates Seventh Street, uh, we're going to be repaving that road. We've got a Palm Beach Lake Service Alley, uh, and up on thirty first to thirty fifth streets. Uh, we're doing another utility project up there, which we're going to you to lose about seven hundred thousand dollars of that towards that. The Washington Road Project, which will get started uh the beginning of next year. Uh, we've allotted about eight hundred twenty thousand dollars of roadway money towards that. And then Elizabeth Avenue, which is also a utility drainage project, we're going to repave and that's, that's about five hundred ninety thousand dollars worth. So um, you can look at what our committed program is, or committed projects. And then the uh twenty one, twenty one paving program, we've got about two point four million dollars to uh distribute to the various projects. Uh, some of these projects, Carver Avenue, we're looking at doing with a co- a combination of getting some grant funding. And then uh, some of these other ones, like I think Pine Terrace actually has some drainage issues that we need to um. Make sure that we get those addressed before we go ahead and do that paving, so we're still investigating that. But just based on the pavement condition indexes, these are certainly priorities and we want to try to get to these as quickly as we can. Um, another um, future priorities, since uh we're working on fifty five and under right now, next year, we'll probably focus on a. Any PCIs that are under sixty and then the following year will probably go up as high as sixty five. That's what I anticipate. Uh, for fiscal twenty three. There has been some questions about Flagler Drive, uh, about uh what those pavement conditions are. I know there's been a lot of uh questions about. When we're going to pave that, et cetera. So just for reference, I wanted to list the pavement condition indexes on the sections of Flagler here. And you can see from the southern end going to the north that uh, from Arlington to Forest Hill, it's about a seventy six average. Which is considered good, fair and satisfactory. The section between Forest Hill and and Bunker Ranch is a PCI average of eighty three, which is good or satisfactory. Um, from Bunker Ranch to Southern is a seventy seven average, which is also cla- categorized as good, fair or satisfactory. There is a section between Southern and Greenwood, which is a sixty, which is not, which is considered fair. And will likely be in our priority program for fiscal twenty two. Um, Bar- Barcelona, Avalon, Avala to Barcelona, uh, this is after it becomes Washington Road. Then it's a, that's a seventy two, which is a fair and satisfactory. Barcelona to Banyon is a sixty three average. Uh, so that's probably going to come up uh in the next year, next year or two. Uh, when we get to that priority category, that that level of uh PCI. Okeechobee to Banyon is up to a ninety four. Uh. And then from Banyon to Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard is an eighty six, which is good, fair, satisfactory. We did do a section of Banyon or of, you know, of um. Uh, Flagler, uh, right in front of the Old City Hall site this past year, uh, which was really a bad section there. Uh, even though that was part of this average, that'll certainly increase when we look at this thing again next time. And then from Palm Beach Lakes to twenty third, we got an eighty nine average, which is good or satisfactory. Twenty third to thirty sixth is an eighty nine average. And then thirty six to fifty nine, the northern section of it is a PCI seventy five. Which um, has various sections of it. There's some areas, um, uh, some isolated spots that are in poor condition. And we'll look at what we can possibly do with those uh as well for this next coming year. So, um, that was all I had to uh provide on this. If there's any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer those.
Kevin, thank you uh for that uh report. Uh, now I take it that if if if, we do take into account the master bike plan. When we're repaving uh some of these streets, uh i- if they're affected by that, correct?
Yes, we do. Uh, that's part of our uh overall um. Criteria like, for instance, when we did Parker Avenue, we wanted to um improve the school zone safeties there as well as um provide. Um, uh, the safer bike lanes there in accordance with the Bicycle Master Plan and so. All of those combinations together, um, and that the fact that it that it was able to get repaved as well. Uh, you know, makes it a um, a much more efficient uh project to be able to capture all of those criteria and and get those taken care of at one time.
Okay, all right, very good. We do have a couple of questions. Uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. I think it really was helpful to see where we direct our resources on the the data. Uh, and my question is, you know, we looked at things like breaking down your sections of Flagler Drive. How do we determine how big of a road section is a a a doable bite, if you will? So you have listed there that some of the condition assessments within one section are good to poor or satisfactory to poor. So within that section, there could be a section that's particularly bad and some that's particularly good, which kind of drag the average to the middle, so. Uh, you know, there's no really avoiding roads wear in different locations, just from wear and tear and you can't predict that, but. How do we determine which which size is a portion of pavable roadway?
Well, um, the PCIs are are broken down into much more um, specific locations as, you know. If we, if we dove down into that um, um, the map that's on the website. Uh, you could isolate areas that have uh PCIs that are lower than what the average is, obviously. And if um, it was a section that was um, in particular need. I think that we could look at potentially um, uh. Programming that into our um, our paving program for the year. Uh, the budget is is a limited budget as I I tried to um, to display to you. But um, if there are other roads that may have a higher priority because of other things going on, like. Hey, like fifty eighth street, for instance, was really, really in bad shape and we needed to pave that. Or if we've got some utility projects going on that we also need to provide funding to um. Supplement that to pave the entire width of the roadway like Elizabeth Avenue. Um, sometimes those take a greater priority. Uh, if there's something that's really bad that we can go out and do, say, uh, uh, just a few hundred feet of something. Uh, you know, it might be worth our our um, our efforts to go ahead and. And try to be able to incorporate that into what we're doing. Uh, the section of Flagler in front of the Old City Hall site, I think, is a good example. Um, you know, that was a two hundred seventy five thousand dollar project, but um, you know, it really needed it. And so um, with the funding we have available and with the various other locations that identified in that previous slide. And where we sit on those and how we're going to be able to to improve these particular streets that are the worst. Um, we want to look at um, you know, if we can do these in conjunction with um. If there's other utility, Vision Zero safety criteria that we look, need to look at on those. And also to look at the various isolated spots where we have um, you know, that might be bringing the averages down on Flagler. Uh, we will look at doing those as well, so hopefully that answers your question. I know it's not very specific, but. Uh, we have to look at all the different criteria and and make decisions based on, you know, all of those factors.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, um, we have a question from Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you for the presentation, Kevin. I just want to make sure I understand this. As you've explained it is that every five years, the city does an examination of our roads and that creates the PCI index. That then we prioritize our projects, um, utilizing gas tax, which. We ha- already understand from our budget meetings has been impacted um, this year and upcoming years. But that we look at other projects that might be going on in the city to be able to work on um. Parts of the roads that might need additional help. Is that a correct summary?
Yes, it is.
Okay, super. So you, then you mentioned like in um, front of Old City Hall site that, you know, it 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 needed it. And I don't know what the PCI number was at that location, but. You know, I would argue that some folks would say that South Flagler in some areas really needs it as well, but I understand from the PCI. Listing that you went through that it's not, that I think there was maybe only one that was at sixty and and the rest are above sixty, but there are. Portions and and I I ride my scooter along Flagler um very often and and I know exactly which. Way to to move around, to navigate the parts of that road that really need it, so. Um, Mayor, I appreciate you asking about the master bicycle plan because I know that. Um, you know, there has been some controversy over bicycle lanes on South Flagler. I don't want to avoid that if. That is a way that we can get South. So. And for, so what are our plans for um, re- uh, visiting the Bicycle Master Plan along South Flagler?
Uh, you were kind of fading in and out, but the part I did hear was revisiting the Bicycle Master Plan. On South Flagler. We we are planning to bring the Bicycle Master Plan in its entirety. Uh, before the commission, uh, probably. And I don't know when that's teed up, Ms. Johnson, if you have a date. I would say within the next month or so. Uh, I'm waiting to hear the presentation from staff. Do we have a a date certain on that, Ms. Johnson, or approximately a date?
Uh, I think it's going to probably be at uh one of the November work sessions.
Okay, all right. So we 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 do have that plan and again, it's the entire uh. Bicycle Master Plan citywide, uh, so that uh commissioners can become familiar with what has already been adopted by by this body.
Okay, and Mayor, if I. Well, I just, I knew that last year, I can't even remember when it was now, like, that we did. Promise to the South End neighborhoods that we would bring this back to them. Um, for discussion, for review, and I appreciate it coming to the commissioners and I think uh, an overview of the entire plan is great, but I just want to make sure. We fulfill that promise as well.
Yeah, once it comes before the commissioners and we remind everyone of what's already been adopted, then we will have a a comprehensive. Uh, community engagement rollout, uh, to to all. to all the neighborhoods that would be affected, which pretty much all of them, with the exception of the Western communities. So no, there will be a strategy for community engagement tied in with that.
Great, thank you. And I have a follow-up, if I might, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Kevin, thank you so much for the projects that you and your team have done. They're beautiful. Again, I ride my scooter on a lot of these roads, and so I really get to admire pavement like I never have before in a car. And, you know, I think a lot about the broken window syndrome or theory that I think paving really does help to elevate one's feeling about their neighborhood. And so I just want to say thank you. I've seen some really beautiful protected bike lanes and paving with great markings for pedestrians to feel safe. And the question I had related to that is, there are some medians, I guess, with some of these protected bike lanes. And I think it was on Lake Avenue where I saw that, and maybe Omar, where there's grass in that median. Do we have a plan for maintenance of those areas?
Well, yes, if we're going to put landscaping in, yes, and there's a plan to maintain those areas, and we work with Parks Department to perform that maintenance.
Great, thank you.
One other thing I did forget to mention, I do want to mention Public Works Department, Joshua McDermott's Department and his staff. They also help with the maintenance of the pavement. You know, if they need to go out and do some little, very small areas, patching potholes and things like that, there is some funding that's part of the gas tax that goes towards their maintenance budget as well. So we've appropriated money towards that. And the things that I was talking about were actually the projects where we're going to go out and do a construction project on. So there's two things going on there. The small patching work as well as the larger scale, you know, full-on road resurfacing projects. So I just wanted to throw that in.
All right, very good. Any other questions on the paving matter? HCD has very kindly suggested that they could go on the next work session, which I guess would be the fifth or whatever, whatever the next, the twelfth. So Kevin, before you leave, do you want to speak to the parking on Monso matter?
Okay.
Did you have a presentation on that?
I just have, I just have a couple of things. Let me see if I can share this.
And thank you, Jennifer Armando, for agreeing to push this back to the twelfth.
Okay, so can everybody see this?
No, we can't see anything.
It's not working. Oh.
There we go.
Okay, so this is a picture of Monso. This is, basically, I'm looking east, just just to the east of Dixie Highway. And you can see that it's very narrow through here where this car is parked on. This is just from Google Maps, looking at this. And then this is looking in the other direction from, towards Dixie Highway. And there's a section there at the beginning of it where there's parking on both sides of the street. There's some businesses right here along this park. And then there's another section here. Okay, so basically, that's this section right here on Monso, just to the east of Dixie Highway, where there's parking on both sides. And what we're proposing to do, obviously, we haven't got all, everything all identified on what the parking needs are going to be here. But as an interim suggestion, we were going to go ahead and put no parking signs and restrict parking on the north side of Monso because there's less driveways on that side, there's also a fire hydrant on that side. And I think that will address our immediate concerns until we can determine what we want to do overall with the parking. There was some question, or some desire for permitted parking to potentially be incorporated on Monso. And we were reluctant to try to do any kind of a permitted parking program in the city because of, there's a lot of effort and expense involved in doing so. And I wouldn't say it's entirely off the table, but at the time when we were discussing this last year, that wasn't being strongly considered by us. And I don't know that it would be at this point. But in the meantime, we want to go ahead and do this. And this is what, this, I think, was one of the suggestions from the folks in that neighborhood that by doing this, by restricting the parking on the north side, would at least alleviate the problem, you know, for a short term until we could come up with an overall plan and how the parking goes on the adjacent streets and things like that. So we're going to go ahead and do this, obviously, after we reach out to that community and make sure that they're still on board with us taking these steps at this point. And so that's what I was going to bring up, and so I just wanted to show that.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Let's see, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, and thank you, Kevin. I think that the residents will be very happy with the solution, as a temporary solution. I, from my understanding, this has been going on for about two years. And I understand that there was also a parking study done and that the fire department came out and said that they, you know, couldn't get a truck down the street when it, there was two-sided parking and that it was really dangerous for the neighborhood. So I think that this is a great solution for now, and I would love to just be a part of your conversations going forward with them.
Okay, we'll go ahead and set something up then to, you know, engage this, this community here and tell them what we're planning on doing and try to get that done shortly thereafter.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Very good. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, and thanks for staying in contact with the residents on this, Kevin. I recall when Scott Kelly was still working with us that he had talked about having some community outreach meetings in conjunction with a parking study to address congestion among the neighborhoods that abut these businesses in South Dixie. I haven't heard any thing about that since he has retired. Is that still in the works, do you know?
I don't think, the contemplation of it is certainly still in existence. I think we probably need to revisit that, resurrect that as necessary so that we can go forward with doing something more comprehensively to address the situation overall.
Great, thank you.
Is that all right? Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Kevin, for that presentation. I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Commissioners, do you have anything under other? Yes, Commissioner, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this time to see if we were going to maybe provide update or further direction to our residents, given the governor's orders on Friday of lifting additional COVID restrictions to try to make sure to set a level set for what that means for our local businesses. I know we're set to do more opening at City Hall with our meetings. I wasn't sure if that meant only commission meetings, meeting in chambers, or if we would start to do meetings like this in chambers. But just to start to give more of a comfort level to our residents that we are still maintaining safety, social distance, masks where we can, those types of things, and trying to make sure that our residents are aware of orders that are coming down from the state level above us that regulate our COVID response, just so that way, when they start to see response at full capacity and things like that, that they're not surprised.
Yeah, I'm not Well, Madam City Attorney, let me ask you to speak to what flexibility we as a city have. It sounds like, once it comes down from the mayor, from the governor, we really don't have much of a choice. Is that correct? You're muted, you're muted. I think we're preempted from.
In the areas that the governor specifically regulated, yes. But he didn't, he didn't dictate how municipal government will hold meetings, for instance. His focus on the most recent order is opening businesses. And that we're preempted from precluding the opening of those businesses.
All right. Well, with respect to municipal government, we already have plans in place to open up the meetings. I am not going to rush into opening up all meetings yet. I'm going to meet with staff, and we'll proceed with caution on how quickly we ramp up to have in-person meetings for all other departments. So in terms of City Hall, I think we're going to continue to have it by appointment only. And we will ease into it as opposed to just simply, unlike what he has done with bars, just simply opening up the floodgates. I personally am still concerned about the winter flu season. And so with respect to what I can control, I want to proceed with caution. And so if that's what happens on city property, we will act accordingly in terms of the plans for telecommuting. We're not going to change that yet. Again, we're going to, we're going to monitor the data. So I don't know if that answers your question, Madam President, but that's all I can tell you.
Yes, Mayor, thank, that gives me some clarity. I was just, to the extent that we can also communicate out to our residents and our citizens the things that have come down from the governor's office, because again, we're the ones that start to get all the feedback of these restaurants are crowded, you know, this place is crowded. And if there's nothing that we, as a municipality, can regulate about that, I just want that information out to our citizens to the extent that we can. I appreciate the cautioned approach, and I agree. I think that we need to be regulated and metered about that response. But to your point, Mayor, there are some things that we can't control. They're being dictated to us down by the states, and I think it's important for our residents to know what's happening.
We will get that out to all of our residents. Mr. Fana, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just really quick, Mayor and Commissioners, just that the order that came down still allows for the county to continue to regulate capacity, as I understand it, on some of the restaurants and the bars. I believe their fifty percent capacity is still in effect. And in addition to that, we're still, we still have the temporary permits that we're allowing for sidewalk dining as well to expand capacity. So even if we didn't have a limit on capacity, hopefully, we can still have restaurants take advantage of that opportunity so that they can expand their footprint and be able to space folks out.
Ms. Rocktonburg, what effect does that have on my executive order with respect to public gatherings? You're muted, you're muted.
I keep doing that, I apologize.
Okay.
The order itself lists in Section One, moving to Phase Three, and it eliminates and supersedes the governor's restrictions on various governor executive orders. And I'd have to pull each one of those. The only thing that it looks like this particular executive order does is it allows people the right to work and the right to operate a business. And it also puts forth the limitation on what a government can do as it relates to regulating restaurant capacity. We can't regulate to less than fifty percent. And if it's less than a hundred percent, then the county has to explain why. I don't see any other restriction here that says that we, as a local government, can't impose other executive orders that we feel is appropriate for the community.
So it does not then eliminate the restriction on public gathering, as you read it?
Not as I read it, no.
Okay, take a look at that and then get back to me. My thinking is that if that is the case, we'll still regulate public gatherings and keep them limited for the time being and until further notice. But we will get the word out, Madam President, as to what it is that is changing as a result of the governor's executive order so that our citizens will know that the governor is doing this, not our city. That we're complying with the governor's order, as we are supposed to. Okay, anything else under other? All right, hearing and seeing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Stay safe.